The December 21st, 2023 meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will now come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
[coughs]
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Treebosser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
And Mr. Mollar.
Here. Let the record show that Ms. Perez isn't here today. Her charity organization is having a fundraiser, so we wish her all the best. Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted as follows: On January 11th, 2023, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star-Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you. Ms. Bourdain, will you please read the closed session statement?
Thank you, Mr. President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempt from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters, and the Board will receive attorney-client advice. In addition, the Board will review their self-evaluations. Any information regarding the closed-session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
Thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Bourdain. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Velez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The Board will now retire to closed session. We will start the meeting when we are done. Please rise for a salute to the flag in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Do I have a motion to reconvene? No motion. Motion by Mr. Treebosser. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Treebosser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
And Mr. Mollar.
Here.
Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notices of bids received by the Board?
Thank you, Mr. President. There were no bids received.
Thank you. Dr. Massimino, please introduce our student representative from John F. Kennedy Memorial High School, Mahi Patel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mahi Patel is a very ambitious, well-rounded student who exhibits confidence and maturity not often seen amongst high school students. She has consistently impressed us as a devoted student, responsible young woman, and genuine friend to her peers. She is an awarded AP Scholar with distinction for demonstrating college-level achievement through our AP courses and exams. During her junior year, she was inducted into the National English Society and National Honor Society, as well as received her Seal of Bileiteracy. Mahi devotes her time unselfishly to her high school and student council as the treasurer, autism awareness as the social media manager, the American Cancer Society, Model UN, and Youth in Government Club, which she is the president and founder. Additionally, she is an integral member of the varsity volleyball team. Outside of school, she tutors Ukrainian students in controversial English—I'm sorry—conversational English—I'm sure they prefer conversational English—and volunteers at charitable walks and voter-registration campaigns. In addition to her rigorous schedule and community service, Mahi finds time to work part-time at her family business. It is evidenced that Mahi is a passionate student who is interested in participating in every available opportunity, and she looks forward to continuing her academic journey studying philosophy, politics, and economics at the prestigious University of Pennsylvania. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. [applause] The following is a summary of the activities that have taken place at some of our schools. At School Number One, the National Elementary Honor Society students collected non-perishable food items for their annual Thanksgiving food drive and donated the items to the St. James Food Pantry. The PTO provided a catered Thanksgiving feast for all students and staff at their 26th Annual Thanksgiving Feast. Throughout November, the community of caring focused on gratefulness. In conjunction with School 27, School One will do a cross-down collaboration, blending their school and community cultures to foster a more inclusive environment. Lastly, American Education Week was held with various activities taking place throughout the week. At School Number 18, the National Elementary Honor Society students collected food for the Township Food Drive and the Seawat the Volli Food Drive. Students enjoyed a visit from a Vietnam veteran in honor of Veterans Day. A third-grade student was chosen for the WTSD Veterans Day poster to contest. A fourth-grade student was chosen for the WTSD Veterans Day essay contest. Students participated in various activities during American Education Week. Students celebrated Native American Heritage Month by completing various activities. Lastly, students continued to visit the Islam Library each month. At School Number 19, the student council collected food for the St. James Pantry. Veterans Day was celebrated with a Veterans Breakfast. Donations for the event were received from Pomptonian, BJ's, Chick-fil-A, Wegmans, as well as the School 19 PTO. During American Education Week, their third graders wrote "thank you" cards for the entire school staff. The art teacher coordinated with grade-level teachers to make Native American art projects. Lastly, the PTO sponsored their annual book fair in November. At School 26, the student council collected food for Seawat the Volli in support of the We Feed Woodbridge Food Drive. A socktober collection was held to collect socks for the St. James Food Bank. Eighty students participated in their first literacy fair. The art teacher coordinated with the DEI Club in making rain sticks for Native American Heritage Month. Lastly, Grade 5 students made wreaths for Veterans Day and brought them to the Veterans Home in Menlo Park. At School 29, the student council ran their annual Thanksgiving bingo, raising $575 for the St. Cecilia's Food Pantry. At Ford's Middle School, the student council held a pink-out and raised over $900 for a Metaviver, a nonprofit organization dedicated to increasing awareness of advanced breast cancer. Andy Three Ravens presented an assembly program in which the students learned about the culture and music of Native Americans. Fall Fest 2023 was an amazing experience for Ford's Middle, and the school wishes to send a special thank you to all who helped to make the event a success, especially to several donors from the township. A collaborative activity with the FMS World Cultures Club and Colonia High School's Asian Culture Club helped to prepare students for the Year of the Dragon. The music department held their annual performance at the Woodbridge Community Center. The winter concert was held December 12th. Lastly, Ford's Middle extends a thank you to Navy Staff Sergeant Ted Evan for sharing his experiences during their Veterans Day celebration. And at John F. Kennedy High School, in November, students participated in the Seawat the Volli Food Drive and donated several barrels of food to local food banks. The National Honor Society students donated, in fact, Thanksgiving meals for local families. The JFK Players performed the musical comedy Murders of 1940 during November. There was an FCC LA competition held on November 20th, and finally, a total of 41 students were inducted into the French, Spanish, and Chinese Honor Societies on November 28th.
Thank you very much, Mahi. Great job. Thank you for your detailed report tonight. You're welcome to stay with us for the rest of the evening if you wish to.
Okay.
Thank you. You're staying?
Yes.
Oh, there you go. I think that's the third time in 18 years. So, good job. We also like to thank Dr. Perry, principal over at John F. Kennedy Memorial High School, for being here and supporting the students, as always. And with that, Dr. Massimino, please state for the record the superintendent's reports for the month of November 2023.
Thank you, Mr. President. I present the following monthly reports: Student registers and fire drill reports, suspension reports for elementary and secondary schools, bomb threat reports, and reports of the attendance officers.
Thank you. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agendas being presented this evening. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside, along with the specific agenda item number you wish to discuss. As per regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. This is for agendas only.
Good evening. Tom Maris, Ford's, New Jersey. Just take a quick moment to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, and anything else you may be celebrating, and to thank the Board for their year of service, and to see that some of you will be leaving, and thank you for the service that you have given over the years. As to the agenda, I'd like to speak to something that I'm unfortunately all too familiar with, and that's sports-related concussions and head injuries. While mine was not sports-related, I can certainly relate to everything that you've got covered in here, and I think you've done a very excellent job in spelling out the dangers and what procedures you would take to follow up with any individual that's a student or faculty member that might become injured and suffer a—hopefully not a traumatic brain injury or concussion. With that said, what is a school's liability for handling any medical expenses related to that? Does that cost fall to the parents or the student that's injured, or to the faculty member? And how would they be covered for their medical exams and/or any further treatment?
That's a question. That's your only question, Mr. Massimino?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Wolferman, do you want to?
Sure. Mr. Maris, we do have—we offer volunteer insurance for those parents that need it. It's a secondary insurance.
I'm having a little trouble here.
Sure. We offer something called volunteer insurance. It's for the parents to use, and they would contact our insurance specialist, who would give them information about how to use that service.
Well, I guess I'm asking, are they automatically covered, or they have to volunteer and take out a supplemental body on their own?
No, they would have to call that, and they're covered under the district.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else on the agenda items?
Thank you. My name is Mohammed, and I'm from Iceland. I just came here to thank you, Mr. Massimino. I had an issue with it on December 14th, and we will take care of that.
Is this on the agenda items that we're voting on tonight?
Yeah, it's kind of an agenda item for transportation.
What agenda item do you want to?
I mean, like, it's not an agenda, but it is a kind of an issue with the School 26, which has been taken care of.
Okay.
Right.
What I'm going to do is—the way we've been running our meetings, if you could just have a seat, and then when we open it up to public comment, then you could come up then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody else on the agendas? Seeing none? Superintendent's agenda. Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendations?
Mr. President, I have 19 items to present to the Board.
Okay. Do I have a motion? No motion. Mr. Treebosser, second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Mollar.
Yes. Policy and Planning Agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following six items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Bourdain?
I just want to congratulate all of the educators on winning the Governor's Educator of the Year Award this year. Good job.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Mollar.
I'll be abstaining on item number one. Yes on all other items. Curriculum Agenda, Mr. Treebosser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following six items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mr. Treebosser. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Velez. Any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Mollar.
Yes. Finance and Insurance, Mr. Treebosser.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following 12 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. President?
Mr. Harris?
I figured I'd throw this in here. Item number one is an item regarding our annual audit that's required by law. It's an audit of last year's fiscal year budget. Want to congratulate Mr. Wolferman and his team for having a perfect audit, for lack of a better term. No additional recommendations were issued by our auditor. The Finance and Insurance Committee met with the auditor, asked him a number of questions, and we are in good financial shape. That's credit to you, Mr. Wolferman, and your team. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other comments? Seeing none? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
I'll be abstaining on item number two, under the name of Susan Bourdain. Yes to all others.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Mollar.
Yes. Security and School Safety, Mr. Velez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Security and School Safety Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools present the following one item, and I move for the adoption foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Velez. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Mollar.
Yes. Technology Agenda. Mr. Harris, do you want to take that one?
Sure. Happy to—the Technology Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following two items. I move for the adoption foregoing.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mr. Harris. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Mollar.
Yes. Athletics and Extracurricular, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Athletics and Extracurricular Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following six items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Mollar.
Yes. Transportation Agenda, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Treebosser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Mollar.
Yes. Transportation Agenda, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following eight items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Mollar.
Yes. Personnel Agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Person on Convention and Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following 49 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mr. Harris. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
I abstain in the name Valerie Henderson. Yes on all other items. Item eight and item 40.
Thank you, Mr. Treebosser. Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Mollar.
On item number seven, I'm voting no on the name put forward for the Woodbridge High School Vice Principal. I've been, the last couple meetings, voting no. For outside people coming in, I think we have good candidates in district, so I'm going to stick by that. Don't know the person, nothing personal against the person, I just would like to see that position filled from within the district, so no on that name, yes on all other items. Mr. Bush, do you have any recommendations to say? Is there any old business that should be brought to the attention of the Board? Seeing none? I'm going to open it up to new business. If you guys could just give me a minute so I could just read a statement. I would first like to say that it has been an honor to serve the Woodbridge Township for the past 18-plus years. The people I have to thank the most is my family. My wife Joanne, my children Brian, Andrew, Alyssa, my daughter-in-law Charlie and Brienne, thank you for all your support, understanding, and love during this journey. Anyone who does this knows it takes time away from your family. Events are missed, but it's the nature of public service. I chose to do this job the only way I knew, and I want to thank you for your support, and I can never repay you. I would like to thank all the Board members I have served with. Each of you had taught me something along the way. Thank you to the members on the current Board for all your help and support. Congratulations to Frank De La Pietro and Marie Anderson on your reelections. You are very deserving of dishonor. And to Nassim Mohammed, congratulations. You will be a great addition to this Board. Thank you to Joyce Grail, Mary Alice Jaco, Brian Dezek, Pat Hardiman, Judy Leiner, Larry Melosha, George Uhas, Monica Smith, Skip Garley, Lou Huber, Diana Quisto, John Golden, Eileen Zulo, Ezio Tambarello, and Brian Small. Thank you for all of your service to Woodbridge. As a Board, we have had many ups and downs, but we all work together for the betterment of the students, taxpayers, through communication and hard work. Each and every one of you have a lasting impact on this school district. To the superintendents, I had the privilege to work besides. Vinnie Smith, Dr. John Crow, Dr. Robert Zaga, Dr. Joseph Massimino. I will always be amazed how each of you did your job. The position of superintendent is such a complex job. You are constantly being tugged in different directions, thrown out, you know, during your day. I bet there were very few days that your schedule played out the way the day started. Each of you handled the tough decisions with class and humility. To Brian Jeffroy and the staff at the WTA, it was a pleasure working with you. We might not have seen eye to eye on everything, but I truly believe that we not only respected each other's point of view, but each other. That is what helped us work out agreements that benefited the staff and the students alike. One position that is very important to the success of a Board member is the Executive Secretary to the Board. Thank you to the following individuals: Barbara DiRollo, Peggy Rooney, Nicole Lonigan. Thank you for keeping me organized and on track with your many emails and calls, and I apologize if I made your task more difficult. I wish nothing but the best to the entire staff of the Woodbridge Township School District. Woodbridge is a unique town, but we do have the best staff in the entire state of New Jersey, and I mean that with all my heart, hands down. Each day, you come to work with a dedication and devotion that sets this district apart from all others. It has truly been a pleasure working with you. I believe our students are in a very good position as we proceed forward. Many challenges will face them, but this Board of Education will continue to give the proper tools necessary to hurdle all these obstacles. the proper tools necessary to hurdle all these obstacles. I thank all the students that have attended Woodbridge Schools during the past eighteen years. To those who have graduated, I hope your education prepared you for college or your current career. To those students still enrolled, thank you for all your hard work. Keep striving to be the best you could be. And finally, to the residents of Woodbridge, thank you for all your support throughout the years. I hope I was able to serve you the way you expected me to. Some people say that it's hard to run for public office, which is true. I truly believe the hardest thing is to run for reelection. That is when you have a body of work that is examined under the microscope. I am so grateful that the residents of Woodbridge approved on how I went about my work. Believe me when I say, I came to work every day with your best interest in mind. It was once asked to me, how would you want your time at the Woodbridge Board of Education to be remembered? I would say the greatest honor would be that when a voter of Woodbridge Township hears my name, he or she could say, I voted for him and it was one of my best votes. Once again, thank you all. Sorry. I will remember this experience for the rest of my life. Thank you, God bless. All right. Thank you so much for giving me that opportunity. We'll go with new business.
Mr. President.
Mr. Chubwasser?
Just want to say thank you. I've worked with you a very long time and thank you.
Yeah, I remember when Jonathan was working for the cafeteria in transportation and we used to have our close session towards the end of the night. He always knew to make a pot of meatballs when I wore a white dress shirt. So I want to thank you for that.
My pleasure.
Thank God I had a long time. Any other, new business?
Mr. President?
Ms. Andrews?
I just want to say congratulations as well. When I first came on the board, you were my running mate, and so I appreciate the mentorship. Your contributions to the Board of Education is inevitable, and we will always remember the conversations that we've had. Your leadership was very much appreciated, and I wish you joy in the next chapter of your life.
Thank you. It truly was an honor running with you and Frank the last couple of years. I mean that. Thank you. Mr. Delapietro?
Just real quick. Brian, you're the reason why I'm here. Twelve years ago...
Yeah, they wanted to throw me off the board, and they thought that you were gonna run against me. Little did they know, we team up.
No, no, but it was an honor to be asked, and it was an honor to work with you. So I'm gonna miss you here. You know, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll jump in next. I have some prepared remarks here. Brian, you know, you've, like everyone else has said here, you've been a mentor to many of us up here, not only as a board member, but as a public servant. You know, you've got a forty-year body of work, working for the township of Woodbridge. You've long worn your heart on your sleeve for this town. Your father was a legend himself in public servant, and I know he passed it on to you, and I know you and your wife Joanne pass it on to your children as well. She's an elected official as well, you know, and she ranks higher than you, beginning on January 1st.
Yeah, she gets paid. She was hired the eighth yesterday.
You know, I wanted to recognize Brian here tonight for his eighteen-year body of work. In my time, we haven't had a member who's served anywhere near eighteen years. That's certainly the longest in recent history. And this is a lesson really to those who are watching. Brian, you and your wife Joanne started as PTO parents, you know, which is really probably the best place to start, where you see schools at their most basic level and where you could really have an impact on hundreds, if not thousands, of students. Because I know you started in elementary school with your three children, and you know, you and Joanne worked all the way up through their completion of high school and then some. And here you are, you know, your daughter's, I think, your youngest is a junior or senior in college, and you're still giving back to the school district in which they're graduates. When you got here in 2005, things were not so good, you know. There was a time when the school board and the superintendent fought often with town hall. We didn't work cooperatively together. We fought for state dollars. There was a number of turnover in terms of the superintendents. And I can't give you all the credit, but I think your timing happened to be very good along with the support of one of your best friends, Brian Small, now a councilman, and then the election of Mayor McCormick. And from there, I think our town and our district has taken off in the right direction as a result of cooperation. And, you know, I was thinking about this. I work down in Trenton. We get along nicely, and we often compare ourselves to Washington DC where they often... They're known for not getting along and constantly fighting, and, you know, the partisanship. We don't often have that in Trenton, and we're fortunate here in Woodbridge Township where the school district, the superintendent, the board and the mayor and the council, they get along. We work together. And I'm gonna highlight some of those accomplishments that have happened in those eighteen years of yours, not necessarily just solely because of Brian Molnar, but because of all the other members, including yourself, and under your leadership in many circumstances, were able to get things done because you put things aside. You worked together for the betterment of Woodbridge Township, and there are surrounding towns of ours where their boards don't even get along with their superintendent, let alone their mayors and their councils. So, you know, Brian, when I think of you, I think of your role on buildings and grounds. And I think over the past eighteen years is where we've made probably the biggest jump in terms of improving our schools. And the first one that often comes to mind for me is our last school is actually the school you went to, School 28. That was the last school built in Woodbridge Township, 1969. It was forty-nine years later it took for us to build our first new school, the school in which we sit in today. That happened during your time here, and that was a result of these partnerships that I referred to. And then you talk about the acquisition of School Number 29, Oak Tree Road Elementary School. You talk about the five referendums that were passed during your time here. That led to the massive additions onto Kennedy High School, Colonial High School, Woodbridge Middle School, School 25, and of course, your alma mater, School 28. Those things happened while you were here, and you could rest assured that in your retirement, when you go back to the farm with Ezio, you know, you could think about these things that you were able to get done. Additionally, we did some of the smaller things, you know, the less sexy things, like replacing boilers, roofs, installing solar panels, technology upgrades and security upgrades. I know even prior to Sandy Hook Elementary School, which happened a month after I was elected, you and the board, before I got here, Frank and John were here, you guys initiated a coordinator of security. And then from there, we have done, you know, innumerable things on the hardware side and on the personnel side to protect our students. That happened under your watch and the boards in which you served. And then probably the most visible things that average John Q. Public sees around town are the sports facilities, the arts facilities, like our auditoriums. Those things all happened under you. You know, you looked at some of our facilities only five, 10, 15 years ago. They did not look, they were not the envy of the state. Today they are. Again, that happened under you. And I think, one of the things I think I'm most proud of that we were able to get done is we are, a hundred percent of our classrooms are air-conditioned, something I heard about over and over again. And listen, you can't learn if you're not comfortable, if you're sweating. Brian, that happened under you, and I know I sat in many Buildings and Grounds Committee meetings with you, where we worked with the trades and we worked with the Buildings and Grounds Supervisor. I know we have Chuck and formerly Anthony Diorcy and Mr. Wolferman and our past superintendents that you referenced previously. Thinking bigger picture, because it's more about than just buildings and grounds, of course, I think of the implementation of full-day kindergarten. What a game changer, where we're giving our students a full year's head start on perhaps other students in other districts when we didn't previously have it, and that was the result of the acquisition of School 29. We had a black eye during your eighteen years, unfortunately. There was the test cheating scandal. Rather than, you know, double down or get indignant, we did what we should have done. And again, I think you were board president at some point during that time period, during that pivot, where we said to our teachers, we're going back to the curriculum. We're teaching all the subject areas. We're not teaching solely focused on math and English. We're teaching all the subject matters. What we've done, Brian, and in your eighteen years, you've always empowered the teachers to teach. We've given them the resources, the fair compensation, the professional development to let them succeed and to let them create their own courses in many instances. I already talked about the security and how you prioritize that, and a couple baby pet projects of yours that you got done. We brought back the inter-district middle school sports. I know something in which you were proud of. And then, of course, the Middle School Youth and Government Day. You know, the Woodbridge Township Municipal Government does that, and we've brought that to our district as well. So Brian, you have a body of work of which to be very proud. Unfortunately, in our business, we often don't get singular credit for any one thing. We're a part of the puzzle, and I think you have a body of work of which you can be very proud, and I'm very happy for you. You're retiring from your free job. You know, as I told the media today, Tony Galato reached out to Dr. Massimino and I, and I said, this is not Brian's obituary today. He is still a public servant. He's given forty years. He's gonna continue to give many more years to the kids of this township, to your recreation director job. I wish you all the best and look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. The one thing I know, and I didn't mention the municipal side in my comments, but you're absolutely right. When I first got on the board, the relationship between One Main and School Street was horrible. We couldn't pass a budget. One group that I have to do give a shout-out to are the Cubs, Citizens United for Better Schools. They worked hard and rallied hard, and, you know, they came up and they got that first bond referendum passed. So I give them a lot of credit. And then when I got on the board, now we had to implement it. And it was, okay, the public is trusting us for the first time. Now we had to put our money where our mouth was. And that bond referendum went smooth. All the work got done. It got done, you know, ahead of schedule, and I think that led to public trusting us to go on to the more projects. But at that time, when I first got elected, Mayor Pelzman was in office, and he called me in and he sat down. He said, listen, we have to improve this relationship. We have to serve the same taxpayer. We can't be fighting. And he started that road. And then unfortunately, he passed away. Mayor McCormick came in and then took the relationship to a whole new level. So, yeah, I mean, when I first got on, a lot of people always used to say, oh, it's all rehearsed. You all get up there and vote yes on every item. But they don't know the committee structure. They don't know the work that goes into the compromise, the, you know, the ideas that get presented in that week that comes to the final superintendent's recommendation. So that's where I thank all the board members that I've worked with throughout the years. And, you know, it isn't just one person, it's everybody. One person is one vote, one of nine. We all have our vote, but it's everybody working together, and I thank you for your comments. Any other new business?
Mr. President, if I may. It's hard to follow Dan. He covered everything I was gonna say. I just want to thank you for your guidance and leadership over the last five or six years, even when we're not in an official capacity, official meeting. You know, your doors are always open, and I have felt that. And I know that I will continue to count on you for advice. I'll miss your funny stories, your cardinal knowledge, but I know that you'll still be around. It is not, you know, your last day in Woodbridge, and you will continue to hear from me. I still have your number, and I know where to find you.
I will always be here if anybody needs me.
Thank you, Brian.
Mr. President, just one more.
Mr. Blesz?
Known you for quite a while now. You've always helped me out by any questions. I appreciate your service and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
I'm gonna jump in here. Mr. Molnar, the board and the administration would like to present you with this resolution. I'm gonna read it for the audience. Whereas Brian Molnar has served as Woodbridge Township Board of Education member since April 25th, 2005 through December 31st, 2023, and whereas Brian Molnar served faithfully and diligently as a board member during this period of his tenure in office, and whereas Brian Molnar performed valuable services to the board and to the public in the formulation of policy and academic programs and for the improvement of classroom facilities, athletics and extracurricular activities within the school district, and whereas Brian Molnar instinctingly gave his time, effort and ability in assisting the board in its effort to provide all stakeholders with a thorough and robust education. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby express its sincere thanks to Brian Molnar for his efforts on behalf of public education in Woodbridge Township, and be it further resolved that the Board Secretary shall cause a copy of this resolution to be appropriately reproduced and presented to Brian Molnar, and that this resolution is to be made a permanent part of the board minutes.
Can I say something here? Absolutely. I guess I should have said something during the board attorney comments, but you guys hadn't started the obituary that was being presented. Mr. Delapietro said that you're the reason that he's here, and you're the reason that I'm here, and you're the reason for a lot of what I've been able to do in my career. I think I first met you, I think I first met you the night that I was here staffing the, as an associate at the Lentz firm, staffing the water balloon incident, which for those of you who are familiar with this district, you may remember the water balloon incident. It involved a group of students. Don't get any ideas, students currently.
We're good.
Who decided out of senior prank, which was handled swiftly by this Board of Education. But I was an associate at the time, and I had to come into executive session, and I quickly understood and learned about the character of Woodbridge, people like Brian Molnar, people like Brian Small, who at the time sort of taught me the Woodbridge way, and ended up pulling an all-nighter that night on the brief that we had to write. And over time, we got to know each other. We got to know each other's families. I eventually moved firms and with the help of you and some others currently on the board. I don't want to leave anybody out, but Mr. Chubwasser and I think that maybe Frank, were you on the board at the time? Just got on, right?
Got on.
Dan, were you just getting on? I switched firms, and at the time, you guys decided to have some faith in me. I didn't have that many clients, and you were one of my first. And we got even closer and had some amazing moments, as Mr. Harris pointed out, and we had some tough moments. We had some moments we had to work through and that are still some of the most interesting but difficult matters I've ever dealt with as a school board attorney. And then at some point, I decided that I would go out on my own. I had a Jerry Maguire moment of sorts where I left and did one of these who's with me. And it was Doug and Ari from my prior firm, who are still my partners today, and it was Brian Molnar and some others who said, if you go on your own, we'll be there with you. And you were. And if it weren't for you and others who had faith in me, there would be no Bush Law Group. You know, you guys decided that, for whatever reason, I was worthy of your support, that we would be the attorneys to represent you. And we had seven boards when we started the Bush Law Group, but only Woodbridge and one other, from a size standpoint, was going to make it work, and you did. And I literally grabbed my globe from my office and any boxes I possibly could, got into my car, called you and told you I was leaving. You called a committee meeting that night, right across the street here at the board office, and you interviewed me and decided that, yeah, this is real. And you put us on the agenda for two days later. It was August of 2014. We had seven boards that week, and we have almost, I think, eighty-six now. But again, I don't know that I've ever, I've thanked you, but I don't know that I've really ever thanked you for what you've done for me personally, professionally, what you've done for my family, and I'm deeply grateful. So thank you. Thank you, Jonathan. I appreciate that. Not only, you know, do I get to call you board attorney, but, you know, I get to call you a friend. And you, even when you were an associate, you always served this board with our best interests. You know, I remember going back to the night that we had to appoint Dr. Crowe as our superintendent. You had that task as an associate, and, you know, we had to read the doctrine of necessity, and everybody knows how cumbersome that is. But we did it, and we did it flawlessly, and that was because you dot the i's and you cross the t's. And I thank you for that. And, you know, with all those nice galvings words, could I be like an associate partner? Or anything like that? We gotta work on the law school thing first. I have some free time on my hands. And talking about the water balloons, and I know we's hiding behind the podium there, Brian Small, you know, we talked about pulling an all-nighter. For me and Brian, I was an all-dayer. That we first got that phone call at 9:00 AM in the morning, and I called Brian and, you know, we met at the port running firehouse, and we're like, we gotta take this in our hands, or this thing's gonna spin out of control. And, you know, we just wanted to put common sense to it. And we worked all day. I mean, radio stations calling, everything that we did. You know, we went in to see the principal. We went to see the superintendent. And that night, Brian's daughter was graduating from high school, and he was supposed to give the address. He went in there and told the superintendent of schools, if you don't let these kids graduate and walk, we're not coming. As a board member, I'm not coming to this graduation. And, you know, he put that on the line for his daughter's, you know, graduation. One of the best honors you have here is when you get to speak at a child's graduation. And, you know, he went to the superintendent and told him, I will not be on that stage if, you know, you don't let them walk. And that night, we called a special session, and, you know, eventually, you know, we worked out an agreement where they were allowed to work. So I worked out a lot of things with Brian. You know, that whiteboard at the flower sale, that kind of changed this district, the makeup of it now, because when the first bond referendum was passed, they wanted to do a complete redo of what neighborhoods went where. And we got inundated with the public that night, to the point where we had to have a fire official with the clicker at Avonel Middle School. Now picture that auditorium, how big it was. And we didn't even really know what was going on. Then the administration presented the plan, and then me and Brian met and were like, no, 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 this ain't gonna work. And in a matter of twenty-five minutes, we kind of shaped the district the way we thought it should be. The board supported it, the administrator supported it, and that's how the board works together. You know, you just, you get in there and you just try to do, you know, the best thing for the staff and for the students. So, thank you. Anybody else? New business?
Mr. Molnar? We have, well, I have one shout-out to give, but we also have something from you, from the board as well. In case anybody gets out of hand, you always have a backup here. So a plaque similar to what we, really identical to what we gave Ezio, plaque to hang on your wall along with far more words. Thank you very much. Something to remember us by.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, each of you. Thank you. It has been really, truly an honor to serve with each of you. Any other shout-outs, Mr. Harris?
Yeah, just real quick, I apologize, I know the meeting's gone long. We have members of the public wishing to speak. Just real quick, I think this needs to be said. This past Saturday, we had two really great events that flew into the radar, and I think purposely, but I think they deserve recognition. So the first one was that started at 8:30 AM at the Woodbridge Walmart, which is located in the Hope Long section of the township. The Woodbridge Police Department Office Community Affairs has been organizing this event. It's been growing. It's sponsored by over twenty-one community sponsors, individuals, as well as a number of small businesses that provide our neediest students with a shopping spree. The money, it's all donated, no taxpayer dollars involved, and it's matched by Walmart, very much to their credit. So twenty-seven families were selected. This is with the assistance of the school district. Our guidance counselors know that the students that really could use the help. So it's about a total of seventy students. They're paired up with Woodbridge police officers, and then they take them on a shopping spree at Walmart. And some of the kids just want a new outfit or toys for Christmas. So, real recognition to the... Excuse me. This never happens, I swear.
It's contagious.
Keep it together, keep it together. Just want to recognize those terrific sponsors and Woodbridge Police Department and the PBA officers. Jesus, I'm struggling here. All right, next up, I promise I could keep this one together later on in the afternoon. The Fifteenth Annual Toy Drive Extravaganza. Similar, this is for, also for Woodbridge Township families and students. Similar, this is for, also for Woodbridge Township families and students who, you know, need some additional support, whether it's toys or gift cards. So 89 families, 190 students. This is organized by the 15 years in a row now, the Woodbridge Billiards Club and their members. They're 110, 120 members strong, mostly all senior citizens. They do tremendous work year round and they really don't get enough credit. Steve Sharkey, Pat Trumpetta and company, I can't name all 120 of you there. This is also probably doing a lot of the legwork in terms of organizing who the families are, working with Dr. Massimino and our guidance counselors. We coordinate this and again, try to identify the students who need the most support. So shout out to Debbie Meehan. The Woodbridge Police also participate. The nine fire districts also contribute, the American Irish Association of Woodbridge, the six senior centers, all the seniors who visit there, they drop off toys annually and of course, they did it again this year. Three youth centers and then our five middle schools evidently were, you know, sites of toy collection. So all these toys went to those 89 families, 190 kids. And then they had, I think, eight bags, like carpenter, you know, contractor bags left of toys that were then donated to Toys for Tots. So that went and even benefited all the other kids. So damn, man, I swear, this never happens, I swear. So just a thank you to those guidance counselors and you know, this district for looking out for other students and their families during the holidays. So, thank you.
Mr. Harris, it's okay. I'm a phone call away. Whenever you need me, I'm a phone call away. Good job.
A sip of water, Dan.
Any other new business? All right. We will now open the meeting for a public comment. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside. As per regulation, 1100D, comments must be limited to, no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. If we could start with the gentleman right there, I know you've been waiting. I apologize to the public for the delay in this meeting. It won't happen next month, I guarantee you.
Yes, my name is Mohammed, I'm from Iceland. First of all, Mr. Molnar, thank you so much for your services. I was listening that you was here for 40 years and what you did is amazing and you can see the improvement in year by year. I'm in Iceland for like five years now, but I see so much improvement, but out of the days and five days.
Thank you.
I just came personally down here to say thank you to Dr. Massimino. I have an issue and I called him with was amazing response rapidly and you know, now we can see that how important is the voting is when you vote and you're selected. How important is the person which you're choosing who can help in assisting in the community? It's really great. And thank you so much for all your board. Complaints can be done another day, not today, because today we can just have it.
Yeah, we save complaints for next month. Complain all you want next month. We're good.
And thank you so much for all your board is all together. I see Mr. Trebowiser sometimes, on and off, thank you so much for you too, because you're on there. And I want to, especially in this cold weather, I want to thank you for the vice principal for Iceland School, the middle school, who always there to welcome their kids. So it's really appreciated moment and you know, thank you so much and stay safe. Right? Thank you.
Good evening, Tom Maris, Queens, New Jersey. And I just want to echo what I said a little earlier and certainly all the comments that you received tonight, Mr. Molnar. You and I have had some differences over those years, about 14 of your 18 anyway. And all I can say is I think you truly deserve every one of the kudos that you were given tonight. And I wish you all the best, whatever you're going to do professionally or politically in the future, I'm sure it'll benefit anything you're connected with. And I mean that sincerely.
Thank you, Mr. Maris.
I'd also like to recognize Ms. Patel for her academic achievements. It's nice to see one of the students actually stay here for the meeting and watch what really goes on at one of these meetings. And just as quick aside, I'd like to recognize another town member who happens to be here tonight for at least his longevity, and that's Mr. John Batarick. It happens to be his birthday today. So anybody wants to give him congratulations or condolences, he's sitting back there when he gets up. Moving right along. Full disclosure, I had called Dr. Massimino the other day and had spoken to him about something that I had brought up at the last town council meeting. And that was the fact that we now have, I don't know if you call them resource personnel or security officers or whatever their appropriate title may be, but I asked them about the fact that they are allowed to carry lethal firearms on school property. And how can they do that? Because they're not active police members in that, I mean, they're not on duty or off duty police officers. They're now private citizens, which in this state, people can qualify to carry a firearm provided they take the right courses and pass all the requirements. But how does the superintendent, how is the superintendent allowed to authorize basically a civilian to carry a weapon on school properties when the state law prohibits it? And I'm sure he has asked legal counsel to clarify that. Also, has the board considered instead of lethal weapons, non-lethal weapons? There are plenty out there that are highly effective. Also, will these officers, security personnel, be in uniform of any type? How will we know that they are? Will they carry concealed or will they carry open carry? And finally, the other part to that is the liability insurance cost. Is there an extra charge that we have to be concerned with and how is that handled? And to what extent is that cost? Another issue is DEI cost. Employees, learning materials, scoring and so on must be costing us, last time I asked, somewhere around $750,000 to $1 million per annum. If I'm wrong, please clarify that, but I believe that's probably maybe even a conservative number. Then who becomes the, or any of the students tested in the DEI curriculum? And if so, how? Because I think it's incorporated throughout the curriculums themselves. So is a student judged in any manner by their knowledge and participation in DEI? And who makes that judgment? Is it a neutral party or somebody that's a devotee of DEI? And finally, given the mounting, and this is more of a statement, but something of a question, backlash in institutions of higher learning, corporate America, and even to the likes of Elon Musk, that are now calling for the disbandment of DEI departments, staff and so on in both the private sector and in the public sector. Those are my questions and comments for this evening.
Thank you. Dr. Massimino, do you want to take a stab at these?
So Mr. Maris-
Carry, the right to carry?
Sure. So the school security officers carry openly, it's an open carry. They've had the same uniforms on now that they've had since September. They have shirts that say security on them, they're all wearing some kind of CAC or BDUs so that they, with a rig where they can house their weapon and an extra magazine. You know, retired police officers do retain different rights than just your regular civilian. We're certainly not out of compliance, we're certainly one of hundreds of schools, one of the many school districts, I would imagine there's probably hundreds out there now that are doing something that we just did. Mr. Bush, I don't know if you want to speak to the, I don't know the exact-
Yeah, I mean-
... legislation, but-
Yeah, so they're, in New Jersey, SROs, right, are able to carry. It's just an understood provision. But there's also a provision in state law, and it's not any one law, it's a combination of exceptions where you're not allowed to have somebody carry in a public space, with the exception of somebody who has permission basically to do so by the governing official of that entity, in this case being the chief school administrator. So to the extent that the chief school administrator decided that someone should be able to carry, who's obviously a licensed person in the state of New Jersey, who meets every other qualification to be able to carry and is deemed by the, you know, the lead official of that agency, in this case, the superintendent of schools, to be able to carry, then with written permission, that person is authorized.
Could that person be hired for security then, if they were just the public? It had not been a prior-
I missed that, what would you say? If that person what?
I'm sorry. Could an individual that is licensed to carry in New Jersey, that was not a prior police officer-
Yes.
-still be hired by the board?
As long as you-
If you're- If I could just interrupt, Mr. Maris, your five minutes, the clock went, so I'm not going to have the back and forth. If it's during the five minutes, you can.
So I'm going to jump in here, just so I can offer clarification. If you look at the job description for the school security officers, which I developed in concert with Mr. Small, our coordinator of security, who was a retired police officer, and Mr. Belez, a board member who is an active police officer, we made sure we went through the checklist of all of the items. One of the items is you have to have attended an academy, an accredited academy. We didn't, we don't want people that, just because you have your, you know, your permit to carry and you like go into the range and you're proficient, great. I still don't see that as being fit, as most districts do not. We wanted people that had been in law enforcement, that had attended an accredited academy, received that training in 2C law and the other assorted items that you have to know to do the job responsibly and knowledgeably and work as a liaison essentially to the police department. So if you look at that job description, their SOAR card, their carry permit, all of the different items are specifically enumerated so that everybody knew what those qualifications were and we could make sure we had the right people in our schools.
I'm sure it's already sharing to the public as well, that's why I asked the questions. A lot of people didn't know and now you've answered them, so thank you.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
The other questions?
Yeah, the other questions, the DEI costs, materials?
So DEI, and I mean, I'll let Mr. Ali jump in if you'd like to, but DEI is not something that we separate out. You know, it's hard to, there's such a misunderstanding of DEI and I think everybody likes to attach the label that they want to it. I don't know how you would quantify it, I don't know how, because we talk about diversity across the board, right? Diverse learners, diverse speakers, diverse cultures, there's, I don't know how you would parcel that out. I'm a history teacher, so I was teaching, you know, prior to being a superintendent, I taught about things that would fall under, that could fall under DEI category that fell under history or social studies or law and society. You know, in the law and society curriculum that I taught over a decade ago, we talked about redlining and some other things. Would that qualify as a DEI lesson? Well, if you want to attach that label to it, you could. It was part of, I think, our consumer law project, you know, and we're going back prior to, you know, before any of this had a title of DEI. So I don't, I couldn't answer your question with the idea of if you took everything we do and tried to pull out an individual item, I don't know what that would look like. I'm not trying to, your question, I just don't, there is no DEI curriculum. I can't say this is my DEI curriculum. I could say this is my social studies curriculum and there are elements of economics integrated and elements of DEI integrated and elements of history integrated and elements of law integrated. So parcelling those things out is something that I would struggle to do. If I looked, I could probably tell you how much we spend on training or professional development in these areas, but I will say generally, there is an overlap. We generally try to give teachers the most versatile dynamic PD we can with the idea that they can apply it in a myriad of ways. They teach very big curriculum, they teach multiple grade levels often. If they're elementary, they're teaching multiple subjects, so parcelling those things out would be difficult. You know, I don't know where you got your numbers, you know, that would be something we would have to really take a look at, but at the end of the day, the investment is to give our students the most well-rounded education we can so that they understand their community, they understand the world and can apply the lessons that they learn accordingly.
No, I appreciate it, it's very complex. I wasn't sure you wanted anybody else to speak to it or-
I mean, I don't, aside from the PD part, Mr. Ali, I can't think of too many-
I absolutely can, if you would like to parallel what Dr. Massimino stated, we do not have a set DEI curriculum. When you think about the, particularly the I inclusion in the term diversity, equity inclusion, or even the E, we talk about equity that's really giving every student the specific resources they need to succeed. That includes special education students, that includes gifted and talented students, that includes students with English language learners. So again, I don't know if you could really parcel all of those things out, because to create an equitable education for all of our students includes so many different departments. But I can tell you most certainly, my department does not have a budget of $1 million. I can tell you that for certain.
Well, I was going back to salaries and other questions when it first started up.
Thank you, Mr. Maris.
Thank you very much. I understand my time is up.
Yeah.
And again, I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, happy holidays, best New Year.
And Mr. Maris, we might not have agreed a lot of the times, but this is democracy in action. You're doing your part, we're doing our part, so.
Well said, thank you, sir.
Paul Lund, Hope Long. With all this good spirit flowing, I don't want to be a humbug on everything, but I will risk that by saying, only in government can a program deliver less than stellar outcomes year after year and still get budget increases year after year. Because in the bottom line of all this, we're still at 35% proficiency, reading, writing, mathematics. And I don't lay that all at your feet, there's a lot been going on for a long period of time. All I would say is that, from my experience, our country was a lot better off when a businessman was running it than it is the past three years. And I think the average man and woman has always recognized that things are done more efficiently in business than in government. And so again, I would ask, so let's keep, you know, our focus on the fact that we got a long way to dig out of and we can't lay it all at the feet of COVID learning loss, even though a union had a lot to do with the extended downtime from the students. I want to bring up one important thing that Mr. Bush has brought up before, and that is, you've said in the past, Mr. Bush, that with the policy, transgender guidance policy number 5756, student-centered, student gets to determine whether the parent should be informed or not. I heard a lot of talk about taxpayers representing the taxpayers, while the taxpayers that are particularly stakeholders are the parents. Do you still stand by the policy that even though we find that the policy is optional, the deputy attorney general in New Jersey has admitted as much, do you stand by the policy of keeping two sets of records if the child decides they don't want to come out to their parents? On the risk that the parents may be hostile, you once said that there's stories around the country that parents have been hostile when children came out as gender confused. Is the possibility of stories, I mean, is that the basis for keeping secrets from parents? Number one. Number two, again, I think we're all in agreement, it is an optional policy, but the Monmouth poll seems to indicate, even among Democrats, which tend to be progressive, more progressive than Republican, 61% of parents feel of middle school and high school, that they should be informed that there are mental concerns of the children that materially impact the child. Given the Monmouth poll, and I don't put all my stock in polls either, but I assume if this is a Jersey-wide poll, that there's a good number, maybe 70% of parents in Woodbridge do want to know if the kid comes out at some point. Why would you hold on to a policy that the majority of parents have shown, goes against their interests? That's my second question, last question. There's still a push from the Murphy administration to give their State Department of Health discretion when it comes to the vaccine schedule. That means if that push continues and they're successful, the state can urge the Woodbridge Department of Health to include the COVID vaccine, which is still for emergency use only, has proven to have some damaging effects and also among a population of youth which rarely have adverse effects from the virus itself. Would we, do you see any, have any news within your body as to how far they're pushing on this discretion bypassing the legislature? In other words, the people who are elected to represent us and imposing a vaccine mandate on the Woodbridge school children? And that's the end of my questions.
Mr. Bush, do you want to? Ah, geez. Paul, I think this conversation would be better over a beer.
I know, I've heard that before.
No, in all, look, in all fairness to me in this conversation, you know, I don't have the books in front of me and going through all the analysis. I've given you some general principles as we've discussed over the years. I know this is an issue that's near and dear to your heart and I think the board knows that and has heard that from you and continues to hear that from you and that's your right to express it. Look, I think the one thing the board stands by is that the board stands by following what the law says. And the law right now is very, very clear that parents have substantial rights as to, with respect to their, to their kids, and there are very limited exceptions. And we've talked about the possibility that there is a limited exception in cases of pregnancy, for example, where there's a, there's a situation where a child shares something with a counselor that, that the counselor determines results in their determination, that information should not be shared with the parent. We've not seen the courts address this issue squarely. It would be a lot easier if they did, be a lot easier if there was a, you know, black letter description of exactly where things lie on this, but I don't agree with your categorization that there's this attempt to keep secrets from parents. There is a dialogue that, that there's an effort going on and certainly no effort by this board to keep secrets from parents. The first and most important intention by any counselor is to share information about a child with parents. And then there are these unique, rare, once-in-a-while situations where a counselor makes a determination based on their own professional experience that somehow a child could be in some sort of jeopardy, physical jeopardy, jeopardy of neglect, in some way. And only in those rare cases would we ever advise that it might be constitutional or lawful to not share something with a parent. But that's a really rare type of thing. And I do think at some point, you know, there'll be some case that comes somewhere, either in state or federal court, that squarely addresses exactly what you're talking about. Because if this conversation's coming up here, it's also coming up, and I know, in other districts where I serve, it's also, you know, there's all different boards who are willing to maybe go further on the issue or not as far as some boards and it's being challenged right now. So I, I can't, you know, there's a lot of theoretical in these conversations that we have. And I say that with no disrespect to you because you and some others who come to the microphone, again, you're passionate about it, but I can't, you know, I'm not going to give my legal opinion on a, on a theoretical set of facts in a setting like this, which is why I joked a little bit, and was only half joking, that this is better discussed sort of in a more casual type environment. But again, I think it's really important that we clarify this. No one in this district or any other district that I'm aware of is looking intentionally to keep secrets from parents.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lund.
And there's no news on the, on the possibility Department of Health's dictating vaccines?
I've not heard it. The last time I, and this guy would know better from his professional experience, but the last time I've heard of any sort of suggestion of any sort of mandated vaccines was that bill that failed or, you know, failed right before the pandemic, there was that discussion about requiring vaccines and that didn't, that passed one body and didn't pass the other, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. So there's nothing I've heard then.
Thank you. Thank you.
Brian Jeffery, President WTEA. Mr. Monarch, on behalf of the entire WTA, I want to congratulate you on your retirement. But more importantly, thank you for your dedication and service over the last 18 years. I had the privilege of working with you throughout that entire time.
Yeah, we had some good times.
As you mentioned, we've had good times, we've had bad times, but the consistent part was that mutual respect. And regardless of the situation, that mutual respect has enabled us to get through and resolve whatever the crisis was. And I could say that this district is significantly better off due to your service on the board for the last 18 years. So thank you.
Thank you. Here comes the birthday boy. 26 years old today. Boy, time flies.
Well, Mr. Monarch, you know, I just got a nickname for you now. We're going to call you Hungarian prince now. Caspina Lina. But what happened was, it just came to my mind, I'm kind of honored to know you for years, you're a great father and one of our family, Mike, of course, but is maybe not aware of, but you're longest-serving public servant than Hungarian president in Europe. And of course, being Hungarian, to get someplace discounted, it takes a man to do it. But again, tonight, I heard a lot of things, comments from both sides. I went to a wake years ago back, one of the chairman's wake, and he said to me, John, I was kind of surprised that you came to my, my father's wake. Why? Because we are on an opposite side. I said, no, no, we are same side, we just got different approach. And he just looked at me. You dare to help the people and didn't come at the time Morris over there? I think we got to expect each other to hit other people's view because we listen to a different people. And I don't want, not to Mr. Harris over there, they said they have the same problem in Capitol or in Trenton because there's some Republicans over there. So that's why they're kind of give you trouble there. But again, you guys doing good job, and I always said many, many times before, it's not that you don't do a good job, just look what's happening around us. It's a different things every day, it's a different things in this community, not most of the state maybe, but this is different. We all know it, why? So it's hard thing to do. It's hard to teach somebody they don't speak English, not just, so it's very hard, it's a hard job to do it and people expect too much from you. Nobody wants to admit it, why it's happening. We know why it's happening. We all know. You go to Europe. But I want to bring other issues over here, but I can relate tonight, tonight, about the council meeting we went to and question was brought up about the police patrolling the schools. And in my book, I think that's most important decision, you have to make it, not that I'm against police, you need police, you need a real, real qualified people to do these things. And what I don't understand is, is there just going to be Woodbridge, off-duty police or just off-duty police? Most important, they should never be left to anybody. If you are police, you gotta carry gun, period. When you hear over here, you protect the most vulnerable people in the country, in our town, that's the people, but they are kids. Look what's happening in Europe. Next year is going to be tough year. And if they can hurt us, grownups, they're going to go after kids. So please get the right people that will do the job. Just don't get people there because they are bodies, so to speak, most qualified people you can get because that's most important. And not, I shouldn't say what nepotism, just get people that do the job. And not just to patrol the cars, you want the people to mingle with the kids, to know the kids. If you just put anybody that had a S-COP or what this and that, you know, let's be honest, how many times you drive, see the police sitting in the car and just on telephone? You gotta be awake 24/7 over here. And I don't want to bring it up because a lot of things are negative things that we know what's happening in Europe, how the people place the things in schools, when the schools are closed, school parks, wherever the kids are, it's a sad. So wake up, we all support you, police, but please, whoever's in charge of it, put right person in charge to put right people at 24/7. And again, that's the most important thing that came tonight, even it's my birthday. So the, please, Mr. Monarch, congratulations for 18 years.
Thank you.
We all knew you from day one, so to speak, families, and you people have our time, you know it. It's not just, and you do it not for money, you do it for service to the community and that's what people will remember you. You never know someday, somebody might be President of the United States, you know, say, you know, this Monarch guy was the one that changed my life, you know?
That's all because you cut my hair when I was a kid.
Well, I don't remember that.
You got me looking good.
Well, listen, you still looking good. You're Hungarian, you're still looking good. So thank you, thank you, and Merry Christmas to everybody. And thank you, Tom Myers, for the time, for the kind words over here, woke me up. And Happy New Year, Hanukkah, all the things, and wish you next year. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just will say, Mr. Fatariq, that Mr. Small did a fantastic job putting this group of individuals together, his interview process. So I could guarantee you, we have the best of the best here in Woodbridge.
Thank you.
Good evening, Brian Smallport Redding. I listened to all the remarks and accolades. We spoke about Mr. Monarch today and are absolutely, totally true. But he told a story earlier and I just want to finish the story because it shows what a good friend he is, that he didn't throw me under the bus. So he spoke about my daughter's graduation and me giving the speech at the graduation and that is all true. About five minutes before the graduation was going to start, we had a monsoon. The parents were all out in the stadium. Dr. Massimino, you're a teacher.
I was working it.
Yes. Everybody was soaking wet, everybody was running back to the auditorium.
Like Independence Day.
Like, it was something out of a movie. The worst part was, as we all know, when it's an outdoor graduation, anybody can attend. When it's an indoor graduation, you only get two passes. So it was total chaos and mayhem in that gymnasium. They didn't have the opportunity to go out into the auditorium and film it. So we finally get all settled in there and it's 110 degrees, everybody soaking wet. Grandparents are banging on the doors to come in. The police are trying to hold everybody back and the commencement starts. And while it's going on, I said to, I said to Brian, I said, I'm going to certify the class. He says, no, I'm certifying the class. I said, no, you're giving a speech. He goes, what do you mean I'm giving a speech? I said, ah, I'm a little too nervous. You give the speech. I go, here, here's my speech. He goes, oh, that's all right, I got my own.
I always had to be ready with you. I remember that night, I go to my wife, I go, I don't think he's going to do it. He goes, he's going to pass the baton to me at the last second. I go, let me be prepared.
But he was prepared and it wound up being a great night, but again, thank you for everything. You led by example and the board, this town is certainly going to miss you. So thank you.
Listen, Brian, I thank you because, you know, everybody in the district used to be the Bryans. Go see the Bryans, you know? I don't know how, you know, the best story I remember, and I was thinking today, we had the luncheon at the administration building and Dr. Crowe was the new superintendent. So there was a whole new feel about the district and everything. So I'm like, hey, Doc, I'll go upstairs and I'll put my Santa suit on. I go, we'll ring the bell and we'll get everybody to come down and we'll have Santa in the, in conference room eight. So I go up there and I do it and we ring the bell, now all the employees come down for breakfast, I got the Santa suit on and everything, and then one of the women goes, wasn't Brian Small so nice to dress up as Santa? So we traded with the speech with Santa. But, you know, it's funny because everywhere we go, he gets announced as me and I get announced as him. So now we just decided to call ourselves Smallnar. And that, that's what we are, so. But thank you for your kind words.
Congratulations.
It was a pleasure to work alongside of you.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? I'm going to close the public portion now. I just want to wish everybody in the school district, all our staff, our employees, our students, administration, everybody, a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, whatever you celebrate, celebrate it safe, enjoy the break, and we look forward to 2024. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.